Our clock is just a little fast, so we're waiting for TV time, so hang in with us. Pursuant to sections 84-1411 of the Nebraska statutes, notice of this meeting was given on August 12th, 2016. The meeting will convene at 6:30 PM and visitors may obtain a request to be heard form from staff for any presentation they may have for the meeting. In accordance with policy, the requests to be heard forms must be submitted to the secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. Agenda items are subject to reordering at the discretion of the board president. Please attend the entire meeting to ensure you're able to hear any discussion. Pursuant to sections 84-1411 of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 and the Board of Educational Service Unit Number 19 will be held on Wednesday, September 7th, 2016 at 6:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room of the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cummings Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the administrative building during regular working hours. Pursuant to section 84-1412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the north wall. Would you please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance?
And we are going to read our vision and mission statement, the OPS vision, every student, every day, prepared for success, and the mission, Omaha Public Schools prepares all students to excel in college, career, and life.
Okay, with that, roll call, please. Mr. Ray.
Fay.
Here.
Gadding.
Here.
America.
Present.
Scanlon.
Present.
Snow.
Here.
Underwood.
Here.
Vargas.
Present.
Wayne.
Present.
Williams.
Present.
Nine present.
All right. With that, we're going to move on to Ms. Farmer, and she's going to introduce a couple of very important school spotlights this evening.
Thank you, Madam President, Superintendent, members of the board. We have two school spotlights for this evening. We'd first like to begin with congratulating the Omaha South High School varsity boys soccer team for winning the state championship in May. South defeated Creighton Prep in the Class A Final One to Zero. We salute and welcome the team, Mr. Ruben Connel, principal, coaches Dennis Mitchell and Joe Moss.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us here. I'm joined by Athletic Director Dennis Mitchell, assistant coaches Mike White and Taylor White, head coach Joe Moss, and then a couple of our players. So if I could just ask them to stand real quick to be recognized. So just to say a few words. First, I mean, I wasn't expecting such a great turnout to support us, so thank you. You know, it's always good to be able to stand up here and be on the spotlight for just something of this magnitude. When you look at, in South Omaha, soccer is really a big part of the population that we have the privilege of serving in at South High School. It is not just a pickup game that I think is something that just our kids play. You're talking about a game that is embraced by the majority of the culture that we serve at South High. So you're talking, these young men, they may have parents, they may have uncles, fathers, sisters, mothers who play in Sunday leagues because soccer is such a big part of, for us, the Hispanic culture. And so the fact that the community can really rally behind us, and you can see that in, when you look in the stands at the game, certainly during our state title run, but specifically the championship game against Creighton Prep, I mean, we were evenly divided. You knew exactly where the Prep fans were and then where the South fans were. And so to have that kind of community support, I think is important. What Coach Moss and the other coaches are able to do with the young men that they work with is also equally important because they're learning a lot of valuable skills. Those of us who played athletics know, the one thing that we learn is how to work as a team. Soccer is a team sport. These young men and their coaches come together and were able to accomplish something that not very many schools get to reach. South High, this is our second state title in soccer in four years. We finished the season ranked number nine in the entire country back in 2013 when we won it. Back in 13, the last time that we had won it, we finished number one in the country. And so it is incredible to see the level of talent that we have coming out of in our own town, in our own neighborhoods. And so, again, I just want to thank you for having us here. I'm going to invite the coaches and the players to come around if it's okay to shake some hands, but thank you for having us, and go Pack.
Absolutely.
Students tested their knowledge in five subject areas and won the state competition in April, sending them to Boise, Idaho for the national competition. We congratulate the students on their achievements and welcome the team, one of their coaches, Liz Figueroa, and supervisor of Gifted and Talented Education, Deanna Moise.
Good evening, Madam President, Superintendent, and Board of Education. Thank you again so much for the opportunity to spotlight some of our OPS students that have participated and excelled in our Gifted and Talented Education supported program, Academic Decathlon. Pentathlon is a five-subject academic program that strives to foster a greater respect for knowledge, to promote wholesome interschool academic competition, and to further develop student communication skills. Tonight, we want to specifically recognize the coaches and students from McMillan Middle School, where this past May, they took their fourth trip in five years to the national contest. In 2012, McMillan finished second, and in 2015, they finished third in the nation. This past May, McMillan's coaches and students, as Ms. Farmer said, participated in the national competition in Boise, Idaho, where they faced teams from California, Texas, Utah, and China. And for some, was their first time on an airplane, so. With us here tonight are a few of the coaches and students from the McMillan teams, so I'll have them give a wave as I say their name. Coaches Elizabeth Figueroa, Eric Hagan, Amanda Reinhardt, and student teammates Lindsey Bateman, Rebecca Bernhardt Schmidt, Adam Crum, Micah Gilbert, Isabel Kolb, and Ruby Platt. And then just special recognitions to Sophia Rotis and Nia Quett, who aren't here tonight, but both earned medals in Fine Arts at the national competition for the eighth grade level. And then here tonight, Becca Bernhardt, and not here, Asia Brown, who earned bronze medals in Fine Arts at the national competition. So Becca was one of those medalists at the national competition. Additionally, at the seventh grade level, Isabel Kolb and Ruby Platt both earned bronze medals in Social Sciences. And then if Isabel Kolb and Micah Gilbert would step forward, these two both won gold medals in math, and Micah had the only perfect score at this year's competition. And then just want to give a special recognition or shout out to Liz Figueroa, coach and gifted and talented education facilitator at McMillan, who has been a great support and extremely instrumental in promoting the Academic Pentathlon program at McMillan, as well as providing that opportunity across the Omaha Public Schools. This year, Liz is passing the acap pentatorch onto her colleagues and successor at McMillan as she continues her career at Benson High School as an English Language Arts teacher. So good luck, Liz.
Well, we are so impressed with how well you did. And I know McMillan, having had a middle schooler, McMillan's always that team to beat. And you guys were tough again this last year, and so I want to congratulate you. And I want to thank Liz for all of her efforts at McMillan. Not only has the Academic Pentathlon team done well, but I think Geography B., is that right? You've had state place...
We've been state, the only middle school has been state every year for 25 years.
Okay, every year for 25 years. You're the only middle school in the state. Isn't that impressive? Very impressive. So we want to thank you for everything you've done, and we know the great work will continue on. So thank you so much. And we definitely want to be able to shake your hands because those are pretty impressive feats that you've just accomplished. So Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Madam President. Several things to report. First, I wanted to start off just by saying we've had probably the best start to a school year ever in our district's history, at least with school achievement as results are concerned. I'm passing out the Excellence and Achievement Awards, which are the Gold, Silver, and Honorable Mention Awards to our school board. Although we're not able to release all of our individual schools' scores due to a state embargo, we can identify schools that have had 5% growth in state achievement in the NESA scores, reading, writing, math, and we do have 21 gold achieving schools, 13 silver, and 27 honorable mention, which is by far the most we've ever had. So I want to give a round of applause to all the teachers, the school students, and administrators. We had a kickoff activity where we recognized all of these schools, and five of our school board members were there, too. Thank you for attending. And it was one of the best celebrations we've ever had, to see the smiles on the faces of principals as they were recognized for the great achievement they're having in their schools. And by the way, the state has not released all the disaggregated data, but I can tell you by looking at what I have right now, our achievement gap is also going to be diminished. So we're going up in achievement, the achievement gap's being diminished, and I could feel that today as I visited six different schools this morning and talked to teachers, talked to staff. So we really feel good about the start of this school year. I also wanted to remind the school board that we had, one of our schools was identified as a priority school by the State of Nebraska. That was Druid Hill. Last week, the state not only adopted the plan that's already demonstrating improvement, they're a silver award-winning school, but it now is really a model for the entire state of Nebraska of how teachers and administrators can work with students and community to turn a school around. 5% growth in two of the NESA areas, and I can tell you right now, they're so excited. We're going to see more growth in that in this coming school year. So another exciting piece. I also wanted to mention to the board, tomorrow at 6 o'clock, we'll be doing a ribbon-cutting activity at Ponca Elementary School. If you have a chance to come see a beautifully renovated school, really one of the first of many, many high-quality bond-issue programs that are just going off in incredible fashion, we'd love to have, in fact, anyone in the audience, if you'd like to be a part of that great celebration of that Ponca Elementary remodel that's just a gorgeous piece. It's at 6 o'clock tomorrow. So wanted to mention that, too, and again, thanks to everyone that supported this wonderful start to the school year. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Kenoki, the Treasures Report.
I'd like to present to you the Treasures Report and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Board member reports. Do we have any? Mr. Scanlon and then Mr. Snow.
I was absent from the August 1st board workshop when we were talking about, or getting an update on the athletic participation in the 2.0 GPA. I guess the only thing that, as I was watching the podcast, the only thing that I saw that, like to throw my two cents in, was the discussion about how the statistics are being utilized. The, I think, the main focus of that 2.0 GPA was put in to, you know, help our students that are right hovering around that 2.0 GPA, and if for statistical reasons, if we need to throw out those students that have, you know, 2.5 and above to really see how effective our policy is, I think that might be an option, as opposed to including all the students that, you know, have 3.0 or GPAs above a 2.5. That might give us better data to analyze how that's going. That's the only thing that I took away that I would like to add for that discussion.
Okay, then Mr. Snow.
Thank you, Madam President. This past Tuesday, past Tuesday, it's Friday, past Friday, I had the opportunity to attend the Multiple Pathways Summer Graduation, and it was their largest graduation they had, with 75 students walking across the stage. And if you guys have never seen one of their graduation ceremonies, it's pretty amazing. Each student gets a chance with the mic and talks, gives shout-outs to their family. And then also, every kid that graduates from the program gets a free class at Metro Community College. And one of the things I told the kids, which I was a little disappointed, only less than half of them raised their hand saying that they were going to attend or attempt to take the class, is that one class is $350. So I told them, and the same thing I would like to express to the board and people in the community, is that we have community partners out there, and Metro is giving these kids an opportunity to at least take one class, to see if they like any class they want. And if they don't like it, they don't owe anything to the college. If they like it, they can take more classes, but that's one free class that Metro Community College is giving our kids that just graduated this past Friday. So thank you, OPS, for continuing that partnership with Metro, and thank you for Metro Community College, and also, big shout-out to the students that graduated, and the majority of them did graduate on time this year. So kudos.
Very good. Anyone else? Ms. Williams?
Well, first, I just wanted to, we have a packed house tonight, and there are open houses going on this evening. And so just wanted to thank everyone for coming. Obviously, there's some things that you want to give feedback in, and just really wanted to take that moment where there are some parents that are missing their open house and back-to-school night to be here. This is important to them, but I just wanted to tell you all thank you for coming. And then I actually had taken, I took a personal vacation and got stuck in an airport for a day, but really wanted to give a shout-out to an OPS student that goes to North High. She's a junior, and her name is Anajiana Fullston. And she is just, to me, this young lady represented OPS very well for me. We're in Orlando, stuck in an airport. She's by herself. I've never seen a student that was so respectful and just go with the flow and really represented North High, and I had a conversation with Mr. Haynes, but I really wanted to acknowledge her. She just really represented our district very well. We have amazing students here at OPS, and if I could recognize everyone, I would. But just keep being the amazing young people that you are, because it's really showing up. You are making an impact in our world. So thank you for that.
Okay, anyone else? All right. If not, we're going to move on to public comment and recognition. Do I have all the forms, Mr. Ray? Yes, okay. So we have 27 forms, or 27 speakers who've submitted request to speak forms. The board has adopted policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit. Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have 30 seconds remaining. Given the number of speakers, we ask that to the extent possible, you keep your comments brief so that we can hear from as many of you as possible in the allotted time. If you are in need of an interpreter, please let Mr. Ray know, and one will be provided for you. We understand that people have strong feelings about the issues they come to speak about. We ask that you respect the opinions of all who speak, and that you refrain from applause or other outbursts during the presentation. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or a staff member, we ask that you not mention the student or the staff member by name, and instead provide that information to Mr. Ray. He will assist us in getting, in looking into those types of specifics for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and you would like to, you can submit your written commentary to Mr. Ray, and we will make sure that every board member gets a copy. Does anyone need an interpreter? Are you sitting beside someone that looks like they might need? You have two people. So do we have, Mr. Ray, we're all set? And do they have the, okay, perfect. And so we've got the interpreters ready to go? Just wanted to make sure we were good. All right. It is now, according to this clock, and we'll just use this clock, 6:54 PM, and our first speaker is Bridget Donovan. So as a reminder to everybody, please state your name, the spelling of your last name, and your address, and then you'll have five minutes, and I won't repeat that just to save time.
Good evening. Bridget Donovan, D-O-N-O-V-A-N, 4223 North 94th Street. I'm president of the Omaha Education Association, and I'm here to speak because I understand there were some concerns related to student suspensions and the efforts of administration and teachers to assure all students are given the best possible education. The issues of achievement as they relate to our students are very real and pressing to our teachers. They are impacted by conditions outside of anybody on this board's control. They are influenced by events beyond each individual person, teacher, parent, administrators, educators, individual control. This is a complex, complicated issue. We need to stop shouting and the finger-pointing and the politicizing and take a look at what the experts have found. We have a basic premise on which we all agree. All children deserve a school environment in which students can learn and teachers can teach. I want to assure the Board of Education that the OEA and our members are working diligently every every day to assure all students receive the opportunity to achieve the highest level possible of success. We look forward to collaborating with the administration at all levels. Superintendent Evans has reached out to me directly, asking for any resources we have available to work with students to assure they are able to remain in the classroom and learn. I'm doing research now on some of the resources available to us from the National Education Association. I hear regularly that the challenges are growing every year in the classroom. Teachers are working harder than ever to meet these challenges. I'm certain that our teachers and administration are rising to the challenges in every way possible. We look forward to meeting soon with the administration in OPS and collaboratively looking for answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Amber Parker.
Good evening. My name is Amber Parker, and I'm in District 17. I have family and friends in OPS. I want to first begin by-
Can you go ahead and spell your last name?
Oh, sorry. P-A-R-K-E-R. And my first name is A-M-B-E-R.
And your address?
I'm, for security reasons, I have not been giving that. District 17 is the Millard School District. I have friends and family that have graduated from Omaha South, and family in Mr. Vargas' area. And as family and friends continue in OPS, I will continue coming to these meetings. Thank you. I want to congratulate first the Omaha South varsity soccer team and the hard work that they put in, and also with McMillan on a job well done. I'm speaking out this evening as one voice, but one who represents the crying out of no more trauma caused by some poor policies in some schools. The testimony I'm sharing is what I used to do to look out and try to protect other young girls like myself when I was in school. And this was elementary. One of my classrooms was located by a school restroom. I kept a very close eye to make sure that when a man walked by, he would not go into the women's restroom or follow a young girl in. I wanted to make sure and try to protect another little girl from being sexually abused. I remember going into a school bathroom, even in the stall, watching through the cracks to make sure a man was not coming in the restroom. The point in sharing this is this: Trauma is real. There are students in your school district very likely who have been through sexual abuse, trauma, or traumas. Are you, as a school district, going to vote yes, giving more trauma to a student or students who already experienced post-traumatic stress disorder or trigger more traumas? And what I'm referring to is recognizing sexual, excuse me, gender identity and gender expression underneath a policy under the umbrella of your already-existing nondiscrimination policy in OPS. Another scenario I want to share: How about a female teacher walking in or behind a male student, using the restroom at the same time? If you vote yes in this new policy recognizing gender identity, gender expression, you now have put many teachers in uncomfortable situations with students of the opposite sex. How are you going to explain to parents, Omaha Public Schools, that as a district, you've given permission to allow teachers and faculty to use the same restroom or locker room with their child, who's the opposite sex of the teacher or faculty member? Or to your teachers and faculty, to bully them by the fear of losing their jobs if they dare speak out against transgender locker rooms or restrooms? Safety and privacy should never be taken away from any student, teacher, or faculty member, ever. No matter who tries to attempt such a move, it's wrong. Vote no to taking away students, teachers, and faculty's safety and privacy. Every school should have, every, every school, excuse me, should have safety and privacy at the forefront. There should be no exceptions. I come here as a person speaking, but has had breakthrough. I was sexually abused as a little girl. When I came in, I would have flunked many grades in my elementary school if it was not for the love of some good teachers and my parents being my number-one advocates and working on behalf. I went through an adoption. My mom's parents adopted my brother and I, and I thank God for them. One of the things that your policy is not addressing are those who have been through those experiences and what it would mean for them. You are discriminating if you honor transgender bathrooms and locker rooms and push this through towards those who have had traumatic situations. There's safety and privacy, there's equality in boys and boys and girls and girls, and there should be no shame in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, our next speaker is Gina Miller. Gina Miller.
Gina Miller, G-I-N-A-M-I-L-L-E-R, 4511 North 167th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68116. OPS parent of two children. I am here this evening to discuss the anti-discrimination policy and the possible transgender policy the board will be discussing later today. I would like to start by reviewing a few things that happened over the summer for the public's benefit. Over the summer break, the board has been very busy. There was a workshop to review the outcomes of a critical friend visit. This is a consultant the district pays to come in and do a critical assessment of how the district is meeting its goals in the strategic plan. The assessment did have a few good things to review, but by far was definitely critical in nature. Some of the conclusions were that principals are tired, their morale was low, mainly because there are significant policies being adopted with no input from the principals they are just told to implement. These are the people on the ground. They need to be involved in the process, same as the parents and the teachers. Second glaring outcome of the visit was that there were continues to be challenges with communication. There needs to be a significant improvement in communications to principals, teachers, parents, media, and community. This issue we are discussing tonight would be another excellent example of that, a very controversial issue being brought to the agenda by a minority of the board members with no input from parents, principals, or teachers. So let's go ahead and discuss the transgender issue. A couple of facts. Our schools do have transgender students, truly transgender individuals who, for whatever reason, feel that they were born in the wrong body and have a need to associate as the opposite gender. Fact: Our schools are constitutionally required for educating all children, no matter what. Fact. I want all children to have a safe environment for them to learn in, transgender, sexually abused, physically challenged, mentally challenged, emotionally challenged, all races, colors, and creeds, all students. For my friends who believe that this is just about a handful of individuals who are transitioning to a different gender, and only to request is to use a bathroom, these policies are far from that. Due to a vague language of many policies, it will mean who will be allowed into locker rooms, which often have no stalls or privacy mechanisms? Who will be allowed on sports teams? Who will be able to stay with children on overnight school trips? About who is actually considered transgender? These policies are about oh-so-much more than a small number of children using a bathroom. Anyone who tries to make it less than that is oversimplifying this issue. What exactly is a discrimination policy for? We are already constitutionally required to educate all children. This implies by its nature that we educate all without discrimination. If we want to talk about discrimination, let's talk about the other part of the workshop that took place this summer, and let's talk about disproportionate discipline of African-American students, which continues to be a significant problem in the district. Let's talk about that black students make up roughly 25% of the student population, but behavior incidents involving black students accounted for 55% of all incidents last year. Expulsions, when a student is kicked out or can't return to that school, that nearly 60% of the 227 expulsions last year involved black students. Reassignments, when a student gets sent to a different school, 83% of the reassignments involve black students. Let's talk about the disproportionate achievement gap for our brown and black students. This is real discrimination, with data to back it up and significant harm being done to a large portion of student and community population. My frustration with the transgender debate is that this issue has been being dealt with on an individualized basis for decades in our schools. Private, individualized plans established between schools, parents, and students, respecting the dignity of all, not being debated by a fiercely divided public with their own agendas. I have seen debates like this over and over again, debates where the end results often have the children, all children, and the schools being the losers, and where lawyers and organizations are the winners. Can we please get out of the game of politics and back to the game of educating our children, each single one of them, meeting them where they are at the moment in time they are with us, creating solutions to difficult situations at the local school level individually with parents, not with vague policies with widespread effects that cause further division in our community? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Dockery.
Yes. Maybe if you could-
Remind-
Name the person who's on deck, then I'll be ready-
Yep, you're right.
And then just remind them not to applaud, we'll get more people through.
So Cindy Miller is after John Dockery.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Dockery. That's D-O-C-K-E-R-Y. I live at 8616 North 57th Street. I'm a longtime resident of the Omaha School District. I'm married, we have five children and 12 grandchildren. My concern today is adding gender identity and gender expression to Omaha Public Schools' anti-discrimination classes. Normalizing gender dysphoria is dangerous and unethical. Policies to defend transgender can be harmful to those they are designed to protect. Affirming a child's behavior can make matters worse. Open access to bathrooms and showers is not the answer. In its updated statement, Gender Dysphoria in Children, the American College of Pediatricians calls for an end to the normalization of gender dysphoria, GD, in children because it has led to the ongoing experimentation upon and sterilization of confused children. Children with GD believe that they are something other than their biological sex. For children experiencing GD before the age of puberty, the confusion resolves over 80% of the time by late adolescents. There is a suppressed debate among professionals regarding the new treatment standard for childhood GD. This media-popularized standard involves the use of medicines that block puberty, followed by lifelong use of toxic cross-sex hormones, a combination that results in the sterilization of minors, and other significant health risks. A review of current medical literature finds this approach to be rooted in an unscientific gender ideology that violates longstanding medical ethics principle of first, do no harm. Mandates by public institutions to force the acceptance of GD as a normal variant of child development and require social accommodation, toxic hormone therapy, and surgical removal of healthy body parts are misguided and dangerous. The Association of American Physicians and Surgeons, the Christian Medical Association, and the Catholic Medical Association share the same concern over this approach. Together, these groups represent over 20,000 physicians and health professionals. Opposition also exists amongst liberal-leaning healthcare professionals who have created an online community known as Youth Trans Critical Professionals. However, those who dare to speak out in support of first, do no harm, often encounter significant public and private harassment, and many have lost or will lose their jobs. Dr. Paul McHugh, in an article in which he talks about the decision by Johns Hopkins, one of the first institutions to begin doing gender reassignment surgery, to discontinue it. "I have witnessed a great deal of damage from sex reassignment," he said. "The children transformed from their male constitution into female roles suffered prolonged distress and misery as they sensed their natural attitudes." Their parents usually lived with guilt over their decision, second-guessing themselves, and somewhat ashamed of the fabrication, both surgical and social, they had imposed on their sons. As for the adults who came to us claiming to have discovered their true sexual identity and to have heard about sex-change operations, we psychiatrists have been distracted from studying the causes and natures of their medical misdirections by preparing them for surgery and for a life of the other sex. We have wasted-
One minute.
... scientific and technical resources and damaged our professional credibility by collaborating with madness rather than trying to study cure and ultimately prevent it. Student safety has been brought up as a primary concern of the board. Having boys and girls locker rooms and showers is a lunatic idea. How is this policy going to add safety or be enforced for transgender or other students? The Glisten Climate Survey that was-
Thirty seconds.
-referred to by the board members is biased and unscientific. Glisten is a radical homosexual activist organization targeting children in schools. This policy will increase transgender numbers. It can even destroy and kill themselves. This actually happens. Children need real help, not this nonsense. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just remind everyone to please hold your applause. After Cindy Miller, we have Darlene Moore.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Cindy Miller, M-I-L-L-E-R. My address is 8330 Elizabeth Drive, Lincoln, Nebraska. I am a resident of Lincoln, not Omaha, but I have listened with interest to the national dialogue about access to restrooms and locker rooms on the basis of gender identity. When I learned Omaha Public Schools had introduced a policy change which could impact children so close to my home, I felt compelled to come today and share my story. Adding gender identity and gender expression to the OPS nondiscrimination policy would provide an on-ramp for some students and staff to access restrooms and locker rooms without regard to biological sex. From my personal experience, I can assure you, the unintended victims of these policies are survivors of sexual abuse. The Crimes Against Children research reports that one in five girls and one in 20 boys are victims of child sexual abuse. The devastating effects of abuse include fear, shame, humiliation, depression, anxiety, and even post-traumatic stress disorder. Like a war veteran reliving a graphic war scene for the abuse victim, any event that hints of their original abuse can cause them to relive the abuse all over again. This experience is known as a trigger. In order to avoid these triggers, the abuse victim spend their entire life looking for safe places, places where they don't have to worry about hints of abuse or repeated abuse. This is what happened to me as a child. My grandmother's house was my safe place. It was there I felt loved, cared for, and secure. Someone I should have been able to trust took that safe place and made it into a house of horrors through childhood sexual abuse. To this day, I find myself looking for safe places wherever I go. Much of my daily energy is spent protecting myself from triggers that would make me experience the feelings of that abuse all over again. Everyone considers a public restroom to be a safe place, and they should. A restroom or locker room is a place where a person is the most exposed and the most vulnerable. If this nondiscrimination policy were used to grant some students access to the restrooms and locker rooms of the opposite sex, every time an abuse victim enters one of those spaces, they risk encountering a trigger and experiencing the flashback of war scenes all over again. To them, this risk of exposure in a once-safe place would be like putting restrooms and locker rooms out in the actual public, no doors, no walls, no protection of any kind. In cities around the country, we have a public safety campaign called Safe Place. It is programmed to provide protection in public buildings for troubled children and teens. By enacting policies that open up public restrooms and locker rooms to any gender, we are canceling out this campaign. If we allow our most vulnerable and personal functions to be open to the entire public, then there really is no safe place. The definition of abuse is a person in a position of power and authority taking advantage of those unable to protect themselves. Most often, this is a person the abused should have been able to trust, which is the worst abuse of all. As educators and publicly, public policy decision-makers, you are the ones our children should be able to trust to protect them. If school restrooms and locker rooms are open to anyone of any gender, the most vulnerable of our society are at risk of experiencing a house of horrors-
One minute.
-every time they use a public restroom or locker room. Please vote no on adding gender identity and gender expression to the Omaha Public Schools' nondiscrimination policy.
Darlene Moore is the next speaker, and then after Ms. Moore is Vic Stevenart.
Good evening. My name is Darlene Moore. That's D-A-R-L-E-N-E-M-O-O-R-E. Seven-one-five-O Holmes Park Road, Lincoln, Nebraska is my residence. I'm not an Omaha resident, but I care so much about this issue, I had to come. I've never done this type of thing before, and honestly, I'm really nervous. Usually, I avoid any kind of public speaking at all costs. I know the lifelong effects of childhood trauma all too well. When I was thirteen years old, I was sexually abused by the older brother of a close friend of mine. Just a few years ago, while I was at work cleaning an office, I saw a man outside in a dark jacket and black boots, the same kind of the abuser wore, looking in the window. And I know this doesn't make sense, but in that moment, I was that scared thirteen-year-old all over again. I was shocked at how panicked I was. Even though in my mind I knew I was completely safe for the remainder of my shift, I was terrified that this man who reminded me of my abuser would be still there when I left. I fear for the kids who have stories similar to mine. If I would have been forced to use a restroom stall in a school next to a male or get ready for gym class with a boy in the room, I know how panicked I would have been. If we know that a victim of sexual abuse could be put into a position of emotionally relive their trauma all over again, don't we have a responsibility to help protect them? I'm not denying transgender kids equal rights, and I sincerely hope that schools can find solutions to accommodate the needs of those students. But those accommodations should not be at the expense of other students' privacy and sense of safety. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Vic. Please hold your applause. Vic Stevenart, and then after Mr. Stevenart is Gwen Easter.
My name is Vic Stevenart, and that's S-T-E-V-E-N-A-R-T. I live at one-four-eight-two-zero Wirth Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-one-six. I'm the father of six children, four girls and two boys. Five of them graduated from Northwest High School, and I'm the grandfather of fifteen, ten girls and five boys. We're all two-to-one. I am majorly concerned about the direction of our country and its attacks on the family, and especially on our First Amendment rights. I am presuming that the reasoning behind the expansion of the discrimination policy at OPS is related to the DOJ's guidelines to ensure the civil rights of transgender students. Many have compared the expansion as similar to the plight of many blacks when they were denied access to public restrooms. That's an insult to the black community. People who are black don't have mental dysphoria. They are what they are: black human beings made in the image of God, male and female. The denial of basic human dignity by denying rights to a public facility had nothing to do with what or who they are. This fascination with transgender and its associated groups is a political movement, not a civil rights movement. The Department of Justice guidelines creates a class of students called transgender, which is a politically-defined class, not a medically-defined class. If the guidelines are implemented, they will certainly harm the millions of ordinary children who are not struggling with gender identity issues at this time. And these guidelines encroach on the legitimate prerogatives of states, localities, and families. School boards are well within their moral and legal rights to decline to participate in the federal government's war against nature. Therefore, I'm asking you to join our state and many other states and communities in rejecting these guidelines and not modifying your discrimination policy for political reasons. Continue to find ways to help those who are affected by gender dysphoria, and protect those not affected from those trying to take advantage of this movement. Thank you for all you do for our students. May God continue to bless Omaha and its public schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, as I said before, please hold your applause, is Gwen Easter. Gwen Easter. Gwen Easter. Okay. After Gwen, we have Larry Storer. Please be ready.
Good evening. My name is Gwen, G-W-E-N, Easter, E-A-S-T-E-R. I live at twenty-eight ninety-five Benny Street. I'm the owner of Safe Haven, the founder of Safe Haven Community Center and the owner of Safe Haven Early Childhood Preschool Education Academy. And I come before the Board to ask that you all not pass this gender identity and gender expression policy. I think, too, that we have other things to be concerned about. Not that I dismiss those that feel that think that they are a man and they're a girl or think that they're a girl when they're a guy. I don't dismiss that. I think that we could use the taxpayers' money and other, find other solutions in helping those students. There are so many children that have come through my daycare and families through my organization who have struggled with many other obstacles, and like not being able to read, parents looking for help for their children because of gang issues and different things like that, that we could focus on. I believe, too, that this is also a political type of movement. You know, you all have these buildings, new buildings going up, the things that's going on with the schools across the street, Howard Kennedy School, you know. We could use it to focus on educating our kids in reading, writing, and math versus trying to teach them about sex, trying to get your agendas pushed for the homosexuality, LGBT movement, pushing Planned Parenthood, and all these agendas that people are trying to push upon kids. Like I've said before, I have nieces and nephews that's in Omaha Public Schools. I know how it feels to be a teenager. We all have been a teenager at one time, and, you know, we didn't feel comfortable with having to pull off our clothes in front of people or hire. And I think it's really wrong that we would put this upon children to have to, to force them to have to be in a bathroom with the opposite sex that's saying that they're the same sex as a girl is when they're a boy. I mean, common sense will tell you that these types of things are abusive to children. And there's just no way that we got, as parents should sit back and continue to let the Omaha Public School system or their organizations that are giving money to, you know, to continue to do this. It's abusive to children. All of this stuff is abusive, and it's not right and it's not fair. And my thing is that I feel like parents need to take back their power. They have the power, they have the authority. They need to take back their power from you all because you, they're paying your, they're paying this school system, the taxes, all this money that's going to the schools. Use it to invest in our kids' education for real and not the agenda of people who just want to make more money off of our kids. It's not fair. Planned Parenthood, all of these things that are involved. You guys know what's really going on. You're sitting behind these desks, and you're making all these plans and all these decisions about these parents. You want to go into their homes and take all this information from parents because you want to take the rights of parents. Parents got to stand up, and they need to take back their power from Omaha Public School system. It's not right. And I do feel bad for those young men or those young women that have issues that feel that there are some different. God didn't make any mistakes when he made none of us. He knew exactly what he was doing when he did it. And what we need to do is we need to love them, we need to, we need to love them, but we need to help them. And children should not be coming home telling their parents that they want to be something different. And that's where we're going to be at if we continue to let you guys push this agenda up on our kids. They're going to come home, and we're going to see a lot more abuse, a lot more pregnancies, a lot more hurt because of what is being pushed up on these children. It's confusing to children, and we're going to put a stop to it. And we mean that. We're going to empower parents to fight back.
Okay, thank you. All right, our next speaker is Larry Storer, and after Larry, we have Dave Meyer.
Good evening. My name is Larry Storer, S-T-O-R-E-R, five-zero-one-five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, Amen to that. You know, we all stood up here and made a declaration, didn't we? We took a pledge. But do any of us really bother to understand what that pledge was and should still be about? A republic, not a democracy. People have been elected to represent us. I pay taxes. Some people don't. Some people just pay rent. I pay property taxes. We all pay income taxes. You're some of the people that are elected. But you weren't elected to take directives from up above, from the federal government. And you weren't elected to take directives and input from non-citizens, from bureaucrats, from people outside our community, per se. You're elected by us, responsible to us. Maybe some of you should give up your jobs. But let's talk. Let's get back, let's get back to the basics. Read this book instead of some of the other books that you've been reading from outside sources. This puts it in a nutshell. It's titled, "We Have Seen the Future and It Looks Like Baltimore," by Lowell Ponti and Craig R. Smith. It gets to the meat of the matter. From there, we get to, well, what is progressivism? It's not progress. It's not the same as progress. It's not the same as liberalism. In modern terms, it's a modern form of communism. We are not a communist state. We are not a state. We are a republic, not a pure democracy. Lee Hamilton, forty years in Congress, called it a representative democracy. I believe that's wrong also. But you're not representing us. A few snippets from the rest of things here, if I can keep it together. That we progressed here locally into sex ed, LGBT, Black Lives Matters, anti-discrimination, microaggression, and what's next? We might find out tomorrow. I heard a rumor that somebody was overheard talking about, he brought in somebody that talks about Black Lives Matter and how maybe they might be wanting to teach our children how to approach Black Lives Matter. Excuse me, is that your job? I don't think so. That's another one of those things that belongs with the parent, with the home. I can't believe how many young people don't have a clue about government, a republic. They were never taught. Maybe it's because you're too busy teaching all these other things. So in other words, power and authority, that's what progressivism is all about, and they seem to be winning. So as Benjamin Franklin said, "Well, it is a republic, madam, if you can keep it." You are the people that are helping us to lose it. And it's time that instead of it being pushed in our face, that we push it back in the representatives' faces, the people we hire, the people that are supposed to represent our interests, not Margaret Sanger, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And finally, if I have
One minute.
... Black Lives Matters. Well, why don't we teach the true history of slavery instead of the history that it's my fault, that it's his fault, that it's America's fault? Excuse me, do you not realize that slavery existed shortly after Adam and Eve? How many civilizations? Don't blame America. We didn't have any slaves before we were formed.
Thirty seconds.
Except was brought over by Europeans, English, other slave traders, and other black people. So don't let this go into our school system because it's poisonous, it's untrue, and that's not your job. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Meyer is next, and after Dave Meyer, Pastor Eileen McCarthy? McCarthy, sorry.
Good evening. I'm Dave Meyer. I live at two-eight-two-three South one-hundred-sixty-fifth Avenue here in the city. Proud graduate, my wife and I, of the Omaha Public School System. We have an extended family of seven educators. I'm here to talk to you about the discrimination policy and the extension into this transgender discussion you've heard about so far tonight. First off, I just want to say thank you because I know you have a thankless job, and you've had some tough issues to deal with over the last year. Controversial, you can't please everybody, and I know it's hard on you, and I appreciate the effort that you put because you are public servants. But I also encourage you to really give serious thought about the ramifications of some of the things that are discussed this evening. You know, I think everyone here would admittedly agree, no one, no one wants anyone to be discriminated against and everyone to have a safe environment, clearly, most certainly, in the classroom and within the school. But I really wonder, you know, you've heard it, is this really a political initiative? Well, one of the things is, okay, we're only introducing two terms. I looked up in the Michigan University Student Life Manual, there's twenty-three definitions of gender. So I think you need to add twenty-one more. And you better hurry up because this list just keeps growing. I mean, when does this thing end? And out of those twenty-three, man and woman aren't even listed. So, you know, that by itself, I think, sends a pretty strong message. And, you know, this issue is very sensitive, but I think you've heard it said already, all of our kids need to have that safe environment, and we should be extending compassion. And you are skilled educators. You know how to deal with individual situations. You passed a brand-new policy just two years ago, and it was, I understand, from the superintendent spoke a couple meetings ago, it was, I don't know if it was blasphemy, it was certainly reviewed under the auspices of the Federal Office of Civil Rights. So that was current two years ago. What has radically changed since then? You know, one of the things I think we really need to get down to reality and think about, if we pursue this, what is it opening the door for? We just put through a brand-new comprehensive sex education program. I know there's debate, but I can honestly, we can show you that right within the curriculum that you approved, that are in your pacing guides that have been stated publicly, there's teaching of seventeen forms of contraception and multiple sexual expressions. Well, what if a thirteen-year-old young man who just came out of that lesson realizes, wow, I don't have to have any predefined requirements, I can just declare myself a girl today, and I can walk and march right into the girl's locker room and have my way? Now, God forbid that would ever happen, but the federal guidelines have no parameters around that, and those are just guidelines. There is no state or federal law that you can hide behind if you move forward on this issue. You know, and one of the other things I think you need to kind of give close recognition to
One minute.
If that situation did arise, you'd have a situation where potentially there could be a state law, a criminal offense, because within some of the statutes, it states that if you create a situation where there can be sexual abuse or taking advantage of a minor, the parties involved would be that in that situation. I encourage you to seriously consider what you're about
Thirty seconds.
I encourage you to seriously consider what you're about to decide upon. And give prayerful consideration to the impact on that. If not for anyone else, yourself personally. I know I would not want to be named in a suit like that. That'll stay with you for life. Thank you very much.
Okay, please hold your applause. Pastor Eileen Don McCarthy. And after Pastor McCarthy is John Carl Denkovich.
Good evening. My name is Eileen, Pastor Eileen McCarthy. I live at 3615 Hockter Boulevard. I come here tonight to express the opinions, I pray, of many who still believe in the values that God gave us to live by. I come here because I ask you to look around and see what's happening across the country. Just because it's across the country doesn't mean it has to be in Omaha, Nebraska, okay? It doesn't have to be here. You don't have to adopt things that in your own hearts, in your own beliefs, you don't have really believed. We know that God made male and female. I come here and I thank you because I am a mother of three sons that graduated from OPS, and they gave them great values and great understanding. I'm a grandmother of two that have graduated from OPS. And I have a 12-year-old granddaughter in OPS right now. When this was brought to my attention, I went straight to her. And she knows, she's heard, words have been going on through the school district, through the schools' highways. And I said to her, "Is this what you want, Morgan? Do you want that to take place? Are you willing to be in this kind of a class?" And you know what she said to me? "No, Grandma, I don't want to. I don't want to be there. I don't want to hear these things." This is my 12-year-old granddaughter. I ask each of us to look around at the condition of society today. We see the consequences in every day of the loss of family, out of prayer, out of our schools, out of role models for our children. Contrary to some people's opinion, we, from the words of the Holy Bible, still believe and are told that we are given our children by God. And we are responsible for our children, to teach them the foundations that add to the society, not detract from society. We protect them. And most of all, that we love them. That's why each one of us are here tonight, is because we love our children. And I know each one of you have to love your children. And you have to see, I'm a product, as many as those that have spoken before, of sexual abuse from the time I was four years old. I myself was in, in a situation that caused me great harm and caused me many years of distrust of many people. And if I stand up here tonight to save one child, then it's worth it to me to say exactly what I'm saying. Our kids are meant to be innocent. We, as their parents and grandparents, are called to love them and protect them from the evils of the world, no matter what covering they hide under. They, as us, should have the same protection that we had in our days and when we were in school. They should once again be protected from those who try to infringe upon those rights. They have the right to learn through chosen choices, chosen sources of their parents, not of the school district, of their families, that they can make their own choices. And when they do, they will reap either the blessings or the consequences of their choices. But as children, they shouldn't be opposed upon. What happened to me should never happen to a child. Never. But it did, because I didn't have a mom and a dad to protect me. I didn't have a grandma that stood up for me. But you know what? I'm standing here for my children's and for my children's children, and I'm about to be a great grandma. And I'm standing for her choice. I'm standing for her to be able to live the same life that each and every one of you were able to live.
One minute.
I thank you that you've heard me. I thank you, Lord, that, that we have so many more things that we have to be obedient of. We need to have our minds on education. We need to have our minds on the curriculum that's in the school. We need to have our minds on common core, which is disrupting our kids' minds that can't even figure out what's up and what's down. Okay? Let us stand freely for our values as those that come against us stand for theirs. Let's teach morals. Let's allow our parents to decide.
Thirty seconds.
What they should use. You know, the last thing I knew? We live in the land of the United States of America, the land of the free and of free will and of choice. And I'm asking you to give our kids that same respect that you were given as a child. Thank you.
Thank you. Please hold your applause. John Carl, as you come to the podium, the next speaker will be Amelia Den Hartog.
Members of the board, thank you for hearing me this evening. I'll be the first one to have a little bit of a different take on what you've heard this evening. I do want to acknowledge the previous speakers, especially those that had the courage to speak about the personal trials and tributes of their life, especially those that are survivors of sexual assault, and acknowledge the trauma that comes with that and thank them for having the courage to share that. That's not an easy thing to do. And I have a lot of respect and admiration for the people that have chosen to share that with all of us today. And I think there's a lot of power in doing so. That being said, I, oh, and I apologize for not stating my address. My, I reside in the Millard School District, 15932 Douglas Circle, Omaha, Nebraska, 68118. I do represent Glisten Omaha.
Can you do your name as well? I think we didn't get that either.
Yes. That's fine. John Carl Denkovich, D-E-N-K-O-V-I-C-H. And I'm the chairperson of the Board of Directors for Glisten Omaha. Earlier, it was stated, and I feel the need to clarify, that Glisten is somehow a, and I want to get it correct, a radical homosexual organization. And I do just want to clarify for the record that our mission is to create and assist in the creation of safe, healthy, and affirming school communities for all students, including students that are lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender. So I would just beg to differ with that characterization of the organization. So that being said, obviously, we're here speaking tonight in support of the district changing its policy to include language that would reflect a change in the discrimination policy, to include both gender identity and gender expression. I would also beg to differ with the characterization of Glisten's National School Climate Survey as unscientific. I have distributed all of that to you previously via email. It's available online as well through our website. And it has the methods, results, and discussion section free and available to anyone who'd like to review it. It's also peer-reviewed as well. The district's, one of the things I wanted to especially clarify is that the district's anti-bullying policy should also align with the anti-discrimination policy. And the district's anti-bullying policy does include gender identity, and I believe should also include gender expression, but we'll take it one thing at a time. So the, I also believe, believe that the district's policy should reflect the city's current policy and ordinance regarding gender identity and expression, which prohibits discrimination on the basis of gender identity and expression for public accommodations and employment within the city bounds of Omaha. And I think the district would be well within their rights to include that language in the anti-discrimination policy, and that would be, I think, a fair and easily understandable change to the language to make. I think that you've made great strides in the last year. I've heard good feedback from our LGBT students that we do provide resources to in terms of a change in climate and looking forward to the coming school year for those that have not started. Thank you. And essentially, I've had the chance to distribute most of my thoughts, and I've passed around a written statement stating the statistics, which I won't bore the rest of the audience with reading, but essentially, the disparate impact that anti-LGBT discrimination has in terms of impact on trans students and students that experience discrimination. So I just ask that you take that into consideration when making your decision today, and that you do so in favor of changing and adding language to support transgender and gender non-conforming students by adding gender expression and identity to the, to the nondiscrimination policy for OPS. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amelia Den Hartog. And after Ms. Hartog is J. Trinidad Sotelo, I think.
Good evening. My name is Amelia Den Hartog, A-M-E-L-I-A-D-E-N-H-A-R-T-O-G. I live in District Eight of OPS, and I address this in that pinch. I am a psychotherapist, and I'm speaking for the Hispanic community tonight. Here we are, some of us, the Hispanics. For us Hispanics, traditional family is one of our values. We love and protect children. Sexual violence of any kind is illegal in all of 50 states of this country. All child sexual molestation are wrong, criminal, and they produce a lot of suffering for the children that are abused and for their families. Children are people in process of being developed. When they are victims, they can develop eating disorders, emotional distress, stress on the brain, depression, anxiety, self-mutilation habits, suicidal ideation, difficulty to sleep, physical problems. They feel powerless, helpless. They, their self-esteem goes down. They feel worthless and are very afraid to talk about those events. You, the Board of OPS, already approved the CSE curriculum that says, "Lesson plan from right, respect, responsibility." Grade Eight, page one, quote, "Through this lesson and curriculum, we are using the language of internal and external rather than female and male condom. This is to emphasize the body parts the different condoms are used with rather than the particular gender. This makes your classroom more inclusive as well as more accurate as the so-called female condom, for example, can be used for anal sex. A cut-open, flavor male condom can be used for oral sex," unquote. Now, if you approve the transgender bathroom locker, locker room policy, you will put 52,000 children in Omaha at risk of sexual molestation. They won't be safe when they use the bathrooms or the locker rooms. Let's work on prevention, not on promotion, of those problems. Please, please, vote no to the transgender bathroom locker room policy. Thank you. May God bless you all, and God bless America, and God bless our children.
Thank you. Please hold your applause. The next speaker is J. Trinidad Sotelo. And then after that, Pastor Delicia Mendez, I think.
Buenos tardes. A la mesa directiva.
Good afternoon.
A la mesa directiva de las escuelas públicas.
To the Omaha Public School.
Muchas gracias por la oportunidad de expresar mi corazón.
Thanks for giving me the opportunity to express my heart.
Y mi preocupación delante de todos ustedes.
And my concerns in front of all of you.
Mi nombre es J. Trinidad Sotelo.
My name is J. Trinity Sotelo.
S-O-T-E-L-O.
No, please. S-O-T-E-L-O.
Mi dirección es 3208 Sur 23, Calle Omaha, Nebraska.
3208, South 23rd Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Soy pastor de la Iglesia Cristiana Hispana Rios de Alabanza.
I'm a pastor at Hispanic Rios Christian Church.
Y también soy presidente de la Alianza de Pastores Hispanos de Omaha.
I'm also president of the Alliance of Pastors Hispanics in Omaha.
También soy papá.
I'm also father.
Y también abuelo.
And a grandpa.
Estoy aquí para expresar mi preocupación por nuestros hijos.
I'm here to express my concerns for our children.
En las escuelas públicas de Omaha.
At Omaha Public Schools.
Por la propuesta de tener baños unisex y vestidores unisex.
For the opinion of you guys wanting to have unisex restrooms and locker rooms.
En las escuelas donde asisten nuestros hijos.
At schools where our kids go.
Creo que es muy importante el mantener los baños que definan el sexo.
I think it's very important to keep the restroom separate that define your gender.
Para seguridad de nuestros niños.
For our children's security.
Porque creo que al entrar a un solo baño, todos.
I think that if we share a restroom.
Se violará la privacidad.
It's going to violate everybody's privacy.
De nuestros hijos, de nuestros hijos.
Our kids' privacy.
Y el, y propiciará el abuso.
And then that could lead to abusive situations.
Y indecencia.
And.
Y a la indecencia.
And the morals.
Como pastor e instructor en la fe bíblica.
As a pastor in the Bible.
Creo que es de suma importancia.
It's very important.
Mantener bien definido.
To be very defined.
El término.
The term.
Hombre.
Man.
Y mujer.
And female.
Pues si nuestro creador lo dice así en su palabra.
If our God says like this in his words.
Es porque es la manera que debemos de conducirnos.
It's because of the way we have to be.
Como país. Como país.
Like a state.
Como sociedad.
Like society.
Y como familias.
And like a family.
Pido pues a nuestro representante hispano.
I ask to our representative that's Hispanic.
Eh, de, en la mesa, en la junta directiva.
Here at this meeting.
Que por favor.
Please.
Vote respetando.
Vote respecting.
Y apoyando.
And being a support.
Los valores de nuestra comunidad hispana.
The values of the Hispanic community.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Dios los bendiga.
God bless you.
Thank you very much. Could you please hold your applause? So at this time, we've reached 7:54, which is one hour. So at this time, I would ask if there's a motion to suspend Policy 8346. 8346 says the maximum permitted duration for individual speakers is five minutes, and the maximum permitted duration for public comment session will be one hour. So is there a motion to suspend, or is there a motion to suspend for a specific additional amount of time? Or to shorten time? We have gotten through 14 speakers, and we have 12 left, 12 or 13. Ms. Faye.
I'm moved to suspend the policy until all the speakers who have turned in a form already have had an opportunity to speak.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion by Mrs. Faye and a second by Mr. Vargas to allow all of the speakers who have turned in a form to be able to speak yet this evening. Is there any comments from board members? Mr. Wayne?
Just to clarify, you still want to keep the five minutes and the rest of the rules? We're just talking about the hour, hour limit. So for the record, I would like to make sure that we clarify that.
Yes, the same five-minute limitation as the previous speakers had.
Your motion to suspend is only for the one-hour time limit, correct?
Yes, yeah, just to suspend the one-hour time limit. Thank you. Great.
Is there any other comments? Just for that clarification. All right, roll call. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Scanlon.
As before with other hot topic type, you know, speaking engagements that people have. As before with other hot topic type, you know, speaking engagements that people have come to talk to us about, I just, you know, in my opinion, we have a meeting to go through. It's a meeting that we're holding in public and we've heard quite a few public comments. I think, again, most will be along the same lines of what everybody's been saying tonight. And in order to get to the business of our meeting, you know, I'm not in favor of extending it.
Mrs. Fay.
I don't disagree with Mr. Scanlon, actually, and I would ask if the policy does pass. I would really just ask the public because I'm sure you all would like to get through it as well, that you refrain from applause regardless of which side you're on and that you listen to Mrs. Gadding and be ready with the next speaker so that we can get through everybody in a timely manner. She's asked you multiple times to not applaud and I understand you're passionate and you want to express that passion, but it does tend to drag out the public comment portion of the meeting. So I don't disagree with Mr. Scanlon. I'm trying to help everybody who brought a pink form get it, you know, turned in, but you don't help the cause when you extend the public comment with the applause.
Any other comments? Mrs. Underwood.
I am gonna vote to extend this. Unlike other times where we have had public input and opportunities with the Human Growth and Development updates in particular, we haven't had that in this case. So I am interested in hearing those who came and turned in a pink slip. But I would also reiterate that we try to keep things moving and be respectful of Mrs. Gadding and not applause and be ready when your turn is up. Thank you.
Thank you, and I have the same opinion as Mrs. Underwood. We haven't given the public opportunity to speak on this topic before, so I will be voting to extend. Any other comments? Okay, if not, roll call, please. Mr. Ray.
Fay.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
No.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne. I'm sorry. Mr. Wayne, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Williams.
Aye.
Ada.
Okay, motion carries. With that, what I would like to do, just to help us all out here, is when I call the person who will be next, would you please come sit in this front seat so that you're ready to go? All right? So the next speaker is Pastor Delicia Mendez. And after that, we have Charles W. Phillips, Senior. So if Mr. Phillips would move forward, that would be great. And we have an interpreter as well.
Buenas tardes, que Dios les bendiga a todos.
Good afternoon. God bless you all.
Um, cuando yo, eh, mi nombre es Dilcia. Eh, puedo decirlo, D-I-L-C-I-A, Mendez, M-E-N-D-E-S. Eh, vivo en el, en la calle 4622 de la calle Monroe. Ahí me pueden mandar el correo.
Forty-six, Twenty-second, Monroe Street.
Eh, quiero compartir con ustedes cuando yo estaba pequeña y iba a la escuela.
I wanna share with you guys when I was younger and I went to school.
And I'm just gonna hold one second. Can you go ahead and spell out your name? I don't think we had that.
She spelled it.
Oh, she did. I'm sorry, I missed that. I apologize.
Mi madre era una, eh, era, estaba tan, tan tranquila cuando yo iba a la escuela.
My mom was calm when I went to school.
Porque no habían cosas como las que están pasando ahora.
Because there wasn't this type of things that are happening now.
Ahora para nosotros enviar a nuestros hijos a las escuelas y nuestros nietos.
Now for us to send our kids and our grandchildren.
Es un terror.
It's terrifying.
Es algo preocupante.
It makes us worry.
Estamos, no estamos tranquilos en nuestras casas sabiendo qué les van a enseñar a nuestros hijos.
We're not calm at home not knowing what they're gonna teach at school.
Soy pastora de 16 años aquí en Omaha, Nebraska.
I'm a pastor for 16 years here.
Madre de cuatro hijos.
Mother of four.
Abuela.
Grandmother.
Y fui maestra en la capital de Honduras, el tercer grado.
I was teacher at the Honduras capital, third grade.
75 alumnos en mi poder.
Seventy-five, I was in charge of seventy-five children.
Y el lugar que más teníamos que cuidar en mi país.
And the place we had to take most care of.
Es el baño.
Was the restroom.
Porque es el baño el que los niños escogen para esconderse.
It's the restroom where the kids choose to hide.
Donde quieren explorar y hacer cosas adultas.
Where they wanna explore and do adult stuff.
Y no, en mi persona, no estoy de acuerdo.
And I'm not for it.
Que usen el mismo baño los niños y las niñas.
For the boys and girls to share the same restroom.
Porque estamos violando la privacidad de nuestros niños.
Because we're violating our kids' privacy.
Si estamos luchando contra una sociedad perdida.
If we're trying to fight against a lost community.
Mucha violencia y respeto.
All this violence and no one respects anybody.
No hay moral.
There's no morals.
¿Dónde quedó el respeto y la educación?
Where did the education and the morals get left at?
El Dios que predijo es un Dios ordenado.
Our God that said the word, he's organized.
Él cuando formó la tierra, él formó a Adán y Eva. No formó a Adán y Adán y Eva y Eva. Formó a Adán y Eva.
When he formed earth, he didn't do Adam and Eve. He formed Adam and Eve, not Adam and Adam or Eve and Eve.
Y tenemos que respetar los valores.
We have to respect the values.
Para que nuestros hijos sean personas.
So our kids are people.
Con valores.
With values.
Con una sociedad sana.
With a nice, clean society.
Estamos viendo una sociedad perdida.
We're seeing a lost community, a lost society.
Nosotros luchamos por nuestros hijos en las casas.
We're trying to fight for our kids at home.
Haciéndolos crecer en el correcto, en el camino correcto.
We're trying to do our work teaching them what's best at home.
Pero viene OPS y destruye todo lo que nosotros estamos haciendo en nuestras casas.
Then OPS comes and destroys everything we're doing at home.
Estados Unidos.
United States.
No solamente Nebraska.
It's not Nebraska.
Aún otros países están metiendo en cosas de esta clase de leyes.
There's other states that are getting into this state also.
¿Qué queremos?
What do we want?
Que Dios destruya.
For God to destroy.
Como lo hizo con Sodoma y Gomorra.
How he did with Sodoma and Godona.
Sodoma y Gomorra no podían ver los ángeles llegar porque querían abusar de ellos.
They couldn't see the angels come because they wanted to abuse them.
Queremos una sociedad sana.
We want a nice.
One minute.
Necesitamos a Jesús, necesitamos a Dios.
We need Jesus, we need God.
Y necesitamos confiar en las Escuelas Públicas.
We need to be able to confide in the schools.
Que el Señor les bendiga.
God bless you.
Thank you, and our next speaker is Charles, whoops, sorry. Yep, Charles W. Phillips, sorry. And after that, we have Barbara Garde.
Yes, I'm standing before you for the very same purpose as everyone else here. Charles Phillips is my name, B-I-L-L, UPS, 7416 Henover Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68122. I stand here, you know, in pure opposition against this anti-discrimination bill that is trying to get passed. You know, it's, it's, to me, it's a subject that shouldn't even be up for discussion. You know, for many years, OPS has educated the kids of Omaha, Nebraska without showing any special privileges to anyone else, you know, especially as the gentleman was saying earlier, as far as the education of black young men and women in this state, you know, it's, they were never shown any type of special privileges. But you know, we, the people of Omaha, Nebraska, of this city, we vote against this demoralizing policy that not only disrespects but also undermines the moral values of humanity in this Christian nation. And more so, you challenge the character and values of our Creator, whom says this is wrong, it's an abomination in his sight. And now you wish to not only confuse but also implant in our children hate for themselves. And I say this because the suicide rate of homosexuals is high. The, um, the disease rate is even high, but also because we, when we, when we try to change the education of our children, we deny them the benefits of having that moral spirit. You know, when God created life, he created man and woman. And he didn't add to it, nor did he take away. And he put upon that man and woman to do just that, be that, just that. But see, we're here today to fight against this anti-discrimination law. You don't need boys going to girls' bathrooms. You don't need girls going to boys' bathrooms. They were born boys to become men and the girls were born girls to become women. And, you know, it's, 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 it's an appalling thing that when you try to make it all inclusive and you're asking for more trouble, it's like opening Pandora's box. You don't know what's gonna happen. It's not gonna get better, it's only gonna get worse. You know, and it, you're trying to destroy the very fabric of what America's all about. You know, it, you want to change the rules for a handful of few to violate the rights of a lot. You know, I'm a proud parent of five children and one stepdaughter. You know, two handsome boys and three beautiful girls and one beautiful stepdaughter.
One minute.
And, you know, they were born to know who they were. They didn't try to be someone they're not. My boys were born to be boys to grow into men, and that's what they are. My girls were born girls to be young ladies, and that's what they are. Now, when we come to.
Thirty seconds.
Systematically destroy the very fabric of the family, you know, this is appalling. You know, this is what God created us to be, male and female. And he didn't, he didn't tell us to teach our boys to be girls and our girls to be boys. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Barbara Garde. And after Barbara, we have Billy M. Grant.
Will it be a problem if I close this laptop?
No, it won't be a problem.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen of the Omaha School Board, thank you for allowing us the time to speak as well. My name is Barbara Garde, B-A-R-B-A-R-A-G-A-R-D. My residence address is 4719 Curtis Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I am a professional educator with a BA in Elementary Education from Cal State, Los Angeles, and an MS in Educational Administration with a K-12 endorsement from UNO. I have taught in multiple grade levels and served as a principal in both public and private schools in Nebraska, California, and overseas. I would like to speak to you tonight about the transgender bathroom issue and the closely related changes to the anti-discrimination policy related to sexual orientation and gender identity, item number J-1B and J-2C on tonight's agenda. First of all, let me make clear that adding sexual orientation and gender identity to your anti-discrimination rules will do nothing to stop bullying in the schools. In fact, calling attention to this issue will only serve to put a huge target on the back of every child who is currently struggling in this area. Allowing students to use whichever bathroom they identify with at the time will only increase harassment while further traumatizing young girls already traumatized by being victims of sexual assault, further destroying the learning environment you are charged with protecting. I know you are good people who love children and care deeply about providing them with the best possible education, or you wouldn't have run for the thankless task of sitting on a school board. You must stop reacting emotionally and begin thinking logically in this matter. There will always be bullies as long as no one is willing to confront them. Truth of the matter is, a well-placed punch in the nose by another child or being sent to bed without supper by a responsible parent when a bully is only six will do more to prevent bullying than you can do in a board meeting. A kind-hearted teacher, aide, staff person, administrator, or caring parent can do more to stop bullying than these proposals ever will. If nobody intervenes in an appropriate manner, children who bully become adults who bully, like the well-placed and often well-meaning individuals who are trying to bully you to pass this agenda. Many of you are being bullied, many of them are being bullied or manipulated by hard-hearted individuals and groups who care only about their political agenda regardless of how many children's lives they destroy. People elected you to office because they trusted you to provide the best learning environment for their children and the children of this community. Don't let them down. Stand up to the bullies with their political agenda. Don't put a target on the back of a confused child or young person while traumatizing many others. If a child is truly transgender, their parents will know and can approach the principal to make private accommodations for their child without making them a public spectacle. Thank you for listening and please put the children of Omaha first. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Billy M. Grant, and after that, we have Nate Graant.
Billy M. Grant, G-R-A-N-T. I use she/her pronouns and my address is 120 South 38th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. So I actually live in Omaha, which I think is important, but whatever. I would like to start this by publicly stating my support for the marginalized individuals in this room that have been demonized by the previous speakers. Thank you for being in this room. You matter and I see you. Additionally, I do not appreciate several white individuals speaking on behalf of people of color, nor do I appreciate the board allowing these aggressive comments to be supported by applause, and I see that too. Today, I do not come to you as a nonprofit worker, as an educator, or as a caretaker. I come to you as a survivor. In my third year of high school, I was raped twice. Once by a stranger asking directions from his red Dodge Charger and also by someone I called a friend in his basement after a movie marathon. It took me some time to name those actions for what they were and to truly take ownership of my body. I am proud to stand with other survivors in protests and to move with them in rallies. I am honest about my past and the ways I have grown. And my being a survivor has nothing to do with bathrooms, or at least it didn't. Not until politicians needed an excuse. I am no one's excuse. My experiences are no one's excuse. Stop using me and people like me to explain why gender nonconforming young people shouldn't be able to use the restrooms and locker rooms that align with their identities. Do not use my experiences to hide your discrimination. It is not because my school was accepting of people who were different than what society called normal that I was raped. It is because society told older men that it is normal to be sexually aggressive with women, that the aggression is actually strength and that women will want them more because of it. It is because society told that boy that my presence in his room at a late hour was an invitation and that my struggle was a game. When you liken trans young people to predators, you are saying they are these rapists. And in doing so, you excuse the violation of my body. You would rather discuss people as numbers to distance yourself. Well, I'm here in front of you today. I am a survivor of rape. That is not always an easy word to say, but you have alluded to it repeatedly, and I think if you're going to hint at it, you need to say it.
Yes!
I recognize the gravity of those accusations or the assumptions that you're making of these students, students you haven't met, artists and scholars and athletes that you would gladly gloat about in a different context, but now, now they're the other and they are numbers. So you have a choice. Will you see them as people who need a safe space to wash their face after PE and urinate before a test? Or will you see them as predators, that you've called them? As a stranger who planted his fingers on my body like flagpoles? Or that boy who shamed me when I left his house without saying goodbye? Or that boy who shamed me when I left his house without saying goodbye? And as you make that choice, remember why you sit in this seat. Is it to pass judgment of students and their identities? Is it to let your personal bias affect your ability to do your job? Or is it to acknowledge and honor the unique identities of each student? Because after seeing this all discussed for months, I don't know.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nate Graz. And after Mr. Graz is Karen Bowling.
Good evening. My name is Nate Graz, N-A-T-E-G-R-A-S-C. I'm the policy analyst for the Nebraska Family Alliance, 1106 East Street, Lincoln. And our organization represents a network of thousands of families across the state, many of whom live here in Omaha and send their children to OPS schools. I'm here tonight to address policy 1200, an agenda item J-1B, which would impact student access to restrooms and locker rooms. We sympathize with children who have difficult issues to work through. But no child should be forced into an intimate setting like a restroom or a locker room with another child of the opposite sex. The very first sentence in this policy states that OPS intends to comply with all state and federal laws prohibiting discrimination. So what do federal and state law require? In May of this year, the Obama administration attempted to redefine sex in Title IX to include gender identity. In short, this was an egregious overreach by the federal government. The guidelines are non-binding and do not accurately represent federal and state law or what the courts have decided. Twenty-four states, including Nebraska, have filed a lawsuit over this policy. A practical approach would be to wait and see how the federal courts rule on this issue before making a policy change. This is what other school boards across the country have done, such as Fairfax County School Board in Virginia, who recently announced that the district would hold off on implementing this controversial policy while waiting for the outcome of the legal challenges from the 24 states. Title IX was passed in 1972 with universal recognition that it was intended to ensure equal opportunities for biological females. The law even clarified that separate changing and bathroom facilities for women were obviously not discrimination. And the regulations implementing Title IX specifically allow schools to provide separate toilet, locker room, and shower facilities on the basis of sex. This is made abundantly clear under Nebraska law, where state statute says the Nebraska Equal Opportunity in Education Act does not prohibit any educational institution from maintaining separate toilet facilities, locker rooms, or living facilities for the different sexes. There is a constitutional right to bodily privacy, to not be viewed unclothed by those of the opposite sex. And this right has been upheld for children at school, employees at work, and even convicted felons in prison. Both federal and state courts have almost uniformly rejected arguments suggesting that Title IX requires schools to give students access to opposite-sex restrooms and locker rooms. Just last year, federal courts in Pennsylvania and Missouri rejected students' claims that Title IX required their schools to allow them to use opposite-sex restrooms. The Supreme Court has also now intervened for the first time on this issue, granting a Virginia school board permission to keep its bathrooms separated by biological sex and blocking a lower court ruling that would have allowed students to use the school restroom that fits their gender identity. And it's not just student rights at stake, but parents' rights as well. The US Supreme Court has also ruled that the Constitution protects the fundamental right of parents to make decisions concerning the care, custody, and control of their children. Under no circumstance should schools operate under the mistaken belief that President Obama's guidelines, Nebraska state law, or Title IX require them to treat sex as irrelevant to the restroom, showers, or locker rooms that students may access. In fact, the courts have found the opposite. Student bodily privacy is a constitutional right that schools have a responsibility to protect. Therefore, schools should craft policies that are both respectful of the constitutional privacy rights of all children and sensitive to the diverse needs of individual children. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Karen Bowling, and after Ms. Bowling is Mark Bunkiewicz.
Mrs. Godding and members of the Omaha Public School Board, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Karen Bowling, K-A-R-E-N-B-O-W-L-I-N-G, and I'm the outreach director of Nebraska Family Alliance. We are a statewide policy and research nonprofit, and we work specifically on policies related to family, education, First Amendment rights, and life. Our address is 1106E in Lincoln, Nebraska. First, I would like to say that I believe that each of you want the best for the 50,000-plus students that you serve, or you wouldn't be here tonight. An extending comment, and I thank you. I'm not here tonight to add to your burdens, but to hopefully find solutions that respect the safety, dignity, and privacy of all students. There is a sharp divide between opponents and proponents of allowing transgender students access to bathroom and locker rooms of the opposite sex. Even if we disagree on difficult ideological questions, we all agree that our schools must be a safe place for all students. The OPS School Board has a responsibility to respect the desires and concerns of the students and parents you are paid and were elected by to serve. Unfortunately, a practical consequence of adding gender identity and gender expression to a non-discrimination policy is that it opens the door for students to use bathrooms and locker rooms of the opposite sex. If a student who identifies as the opposite sex is allowed access to those spaces, the other students who use them are in a position to, one, be exposed to the unclothed or partially clothed body of someone of the opposite biological sex, and secondly, to expose their own unclothed or partially clothed body to someone of the opposite biological sex. Forcing children into this position is a grave violation of personal privacy. On top of this, it puts many into the emotionally precarious position of encountering triggers of childhood trauma. Experts agree that encountering a trigger doesn't cause the victim to remember the traumatic event. It causes them to relive the event. For many sex abuse survivors, the mere presence of a male in a woman's restroom, locker room, or changing room is a trigger regardless of that person's intentions. And the numbers are staggering. Statistics indicate that nearly one in eight high school girls have been sexually assaulted. So, let's talk practical. In an OPS gym class of 32 female students, there is a high likeliness that four victims of sexual abuse are in that classroom. If there is a biological male in their locker room, that's four girls reliving their trauma every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday in 2:00 PM gym class. I believe there are several unanswered questions at this time. Would this board consider waiting to move forward on this policy
One minute.
until lawsuits at the federal and state level across the country have been settled? And if not, I ask you, why? If you pass this policy, how will you ensure that it's not used to violate the fundamental bodily privacy rights of all students? And third, I ask, how does the board plan to work and respond to concerns students, parents,
Thirty seconds.
and educators? So to each of you, I thank you for extending the time and the opportunity to come before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mark Bunkiewicz, and after that, we have Sheri Raden.
Good evening, President Godding and members of the school board. My name is Mark Bunkiewicz. It's M-A-R-K, B is in blue, O-N-K-I-E-W-I-C-Z. I live at 11129 Z Street in Omaha. I'm in sales for a career, and I travel the lower 48 states. I make many trips to the East Coast each year. The last time I traveled through Pennsylvania, I discovered that parents there were extremely upset with the boys on girls' teams and in their showers and locker rooms. They have a lot of problems. They are now working hard to change back to girls-only and boys-only teams, locker rooms, and showers. By implementing your proposed policy, this board is helping kids destroy their lives and, for some, to suffer major depression and even kill themselves. Transgenderism is a mental disease, and we pray for their recovery. No one can change his or her sex. By encouraging gender changes, it leads boys to have themselves castrated and girls to become infertile by hormone blockers, drugs, and even destructive surgeries. Girls also irreparably harm their breasts in many ways, such as binding them. The effects of this bodily abuse also drives kids to become suicidal. Mutilation of bodies is not implementing safety. And safety was the issue with which you said that you were bringing this forward. If you vote in favor of this irrational, unnecessary, and harmful policy, you will upset many parents, grandparents, taxpayers, and concerned citizens of OPS, including voters who live in your own districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sheri Raden, and after that, Maris Bentley.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Sheri Raden. I'm a resident of 7240 Washington Street in Ralston. I'm also a property owner and taxpayer to the city of Omaha. So I would like, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to extend to be talking to you. And I will keep my comments very brief, as I intended to. I want to, I admire the group here for working within the system. The applause has been quickly as we move forward through, so we are respecting you, and I'd like that acknowledged. I'd also like it acknowledged that the survivors of both the transgender and the heterosexual abuse, in the words that they used, were very honest. If they did not use a particular word, they're, they were truth in their words. So, that moving on, I will share my heart for children, why I'm here. I've never had any children, I have no biological children. I have fostered children, I volunteer. I have a great heart for children and our country, which they, which our country falls upon. So, I'm gonna share one instance with exposure to the transgender situation. In another school district, I was observing a class, and the teacher was a softball, woman softball coach. There were several transgendering teenagers in the room. And I, I saw the interaction. I was there for an entire period, and I saw the interactions of the, I'm not criticizing them, I'm not commending them. But I did discuss with the teacher afterwards, and she said, "I am not only the math teacher, I am the softball coach." And I had heard of one of the students try to implore or to make a reference to this teacher being supportive. What she said to me is, "Those students don't know what they're up against." So, this is a huge situation. Very grave your results if you decide to move forward on this. You each need to be very accountable for what you're doing. There are already things in effect. There are rules, regulations, and laws. You do not need to move forward on this. You can't take away all the pain of any child. Your responsibility is to provide solid guidance for these children. Do not adopt a policy that you cannot stand behind and honorably institute. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Maris Bentley, and after that, we have Rob Rohrbach.
Thank you. My name is Maris Bentley, M-A-R-I-S-B-E-N-T-L-E-Y. I live at 2515 South 148th Street in Omaha. My husband Dave and I have been married for 40 years, four children, 10 grandchildren. I'm also a retired teacher and a school counselor with a master's degree in both elementary and secondary counseling. I'm here believing that this is probably a colossal waste of my time and energy. I've spoken to you repeatedly, mostly as a group, but also with some of you individually. Listening to your discussions about sex education for children, and most recently now, the adoption of gender identity and gender expression, all I can think to say to you is, have you lost your minds? I mean, seriously? How else can I account for people who believe that a boy can be a girl, or vice versa? How to account for elected leaders who cannot see that they are putting at risk the innocence and moral sanity of thousands of children? How else to explain the lack of reality in this new reality? Should I share with you the information about Dr. Paul McHugh, who was one of the pioneers of transgender reassignment surgery at Johns Hopkins? Someone already spoke briefly about him. They quit doing these surgeries, and I quote from him, "I concluded that Hopkins was fundamentally cooperating with a mental illness. We psychiatrists, I thought, would do better to concentrate on fixing, on trying to fix their minds and not their genitalia." Should I talk about Walt Hire and the many people who have lived the lie of the transgender lifestyle and have come to have deep regrets about it and what they did to themselves? Walt Hire's gender confusion stemmed from a grandmother who secretly clothed him in dresses when he was very young and vulnerable. This is a quote from him. "That dress set in motion a life filled with gender dysphoria, sexual abuse, alcohol and drug abuse, and finally, an unnecessary gender reassignment surgery. My life was ripped apart by a trusted adult who enjoyed dressing me as a girl." End quote. Now, the entire OPS school system is on the brink of becoming that trusted adult who leads impressionable children into lives of gender confusion and moral insanity. Should I point out the obvious bias of the homosexual activist group called GLSEN? And their also obvious unsuitability to be the purveyors of a survey that promotes everything that they're committed to promoting? It's a generally recognized principle that truly objective scientific research should not be conducted by people who have a vested political interest in the outcome. Can you not see that? Should I share the statement of the American College of Pediatricians, which represents over 20,000 pediatricians and health professionals across the country? And they've stated this. "To eliminate sex-segregated private spaces in public schools violates all students' fundamental rights to privacy, safety, and a secure learning environment." You've heard that repeatedly, especially by those people who are survivors of sexual abuse. No, it seems that no matter how much reality and truth and science we present to you
One minute.
you are all set, led by Marion Fay and Tony Vargas, it seems, to jump into this dystopian nightmare. Yet Fay and Vargas aren't running for OPS Board again, are they? So they'll leave the rest of you to deal with the fallout? And there will be fallout. Generations of children lost to this madness of one's great culture in freefall because we've abandoned reality in favor of feelings and false compassion.
Thirty seconds.
But the greatest fallout's gonna be the day when you are face-to-face with truth himself. And you will, and I will too. And I'm gonna quote from him, my last quote. "Whoever causes one of these little ones who believe in me to sin, it would be better for him to have a great millstone hung around his neck and to be drowned in the depths of the sea. Woe to the world because of things that cause sin. Such things must come, but woe to the one through whom they come."
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rob Rohrbach. I'm not sure if he's here, Rob Rohrbach?
President, yes.
Oh, pass. Okay, sorry.
Could we also let everyone know that comes to speak that singling out a board member is not respectful at all? And I think it's an insult doing that. Doesn't matter how you do it, but it's an insult. So if you're gonna talk about the issue, talk about the policy, but don't single out an individual. We talked about bullying, and that is bullying. Thank you.
That's fair. Our next speaker then is Erin Burbach. And after that, we have Eris Kolazar.
Hello. My name is Erin Burbach. That's A-A-R-O-N.
That's A-A-R-O-N-Burbach, B-U-R-B-A-C-H. I would prefer not to state my address because I'm a minor and I'm concerned about safety, but I do reside in the OPS School District. Mark Snow is my representative, and I am currently a senior at Central High School. My name is Erin Burbach, and I use he/him/his pronouns. And I am here to speak to you today because I'm transgender and I want students like me to feel safe at school. I used to think I could just live with the secret that I'm not a girl. No one needed to know. I would just correct them in my head. It might seem like a ridiculous plan, but every message I had received about trans people up to that point was a worst hatred and a best apathy. I had no way of knowing what would happen to me if I came out, if I was open about who I am. I was too scared to risk it, too inundated with transphobia to feel safe being myself. So, I went to school each day feeling increasingly isolated from my peers and frustrated with the constant unknowing misgendering. I tried to make small adjustments to my gender expression, like my clothes and hair, to make everything more bearable, but I never intended it to lead to coming out. Eventually, however, I was forced to out of necessity. Some students took exception to my ambiguous gender presentation and decided to follow me out of the bathroom, loudly debating whether I was male or female. I find it a little bit funny that people complain about trans people putting other people in danger in a restroom, because I was just there to pee. I made up an excuse to be in someone's office and escape the situation without a confrontation, but the next day, I couldn't bring myself to go back. I was able to gain access to safer restrooms by coming out to a supportive teacher, but it only came out because my need to pee trumped my terror. Even as I was starting to come out to certain staff members, the feelings of isolation and agitation remained. I found places to escape from it, and those safe spaces were invaluable. I am forever grateful to the staff members who made them available. But a few supportive staff members couldn't erase the harm just attending class enacted on my mental health and well-being. It's kind of hard to focus on learning and find motivation to go to class every day when you're associating it with pain. I feel like I should point out that I've been incredibly lucky. I knew where to find supportive staff at my school, and I'm involved in the LGBTQ+ community. As far as transitions go, mine has been relatively smooth. And yet, it was anything but painless or easy. I can't help but wonder about the students who don't have the support systems I do or have intersecting identities. How do you think they feel at school? I want to believe they feel safe and comfortable being themselves, but such an assumption would be exceptionally naive. Every piece of evidence we have tells us trans students are incredibly marginalized and endangered by their experiences at school. That any group of students goes through that is unacceptable. As an educational institution, you should be aiming to keep all of your students safe at school and consequently enabling them to succeed. I love to learn, and I'm dedicated and passionate about my education. I dream of getting a doctorate in philosophy. I just want to focus on achieving those dreams, on enjoying my last year of school and getting accepted into a good college. I really don't want my identity to be a huge issue. It's not fair to turn my gender identity into a political statement when it suggests who I am. I deserve to be able to attend school and focus on my education without worrying about my safety. I deserve to feel good about myself in the classroom. All students deserve that. You have the power to help make that happen. I would argue that it's your job to do so. I'm asking the OPS Board to amend the district anti-discrimination policy to include gender identity and gender expression so that students like me can attend school safely and focus on our education. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eris Kollezzar. And after that, we have Nathaniel Grant Gudinski.
Hello. My name is Eris Kollezzar, K-O-L-E-S-Z-A-R. I reside at 346 South 19th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68108. I am a trans woman, and I use she/her pronouns. And I have fought for this my whole life. It took me 29 years to get to the place that I have finally started to feel like myself. It took 29 years for me to feel finally like I am embodied, that I am this body. I spent most of that time dissociating from my body because it was not what I know myself to be, and it was too dysphoric. Now, for once in my life, I feel like me, despite the fact that I have been told by my society and by members of my own community and some here tonight, that I am a freak, that I am mentally ill, that I am self-harming, confused, unstable abuser who wants to traumatize and confuse the youth of our nation like some cult leader passing out the Kool-Aid. Despite all of that, I am happy. And I now know that I can move past the self-hatred that I have lived with due insignificant part to my own former gender dysphoria and its ramifications, and in that I have found the power to share that joy with the community. I am a productive member of society. I have taught girls in the Omaha area how to be proud of themselves through programming and through rock and roll. My friends and peers respect me and look up to me. Transitioning and the amazing group of friends that have supported me through that have given me the life and the fire to truly give all of myself back to our community and its children. But let me tell you what happens when you don't expressly include trans kids in protected categories, when you don't form best practices policies for trans kids. And the space of your silence will resound all of the other hate speech that you've heard tonight. I agree with one of the earlier speakers, without someone confronting a bully, it will not stop. And by saying nothing, you are doing nothing to stand up to that bully. They feel completely justified in their discrimination because probably no one has taught them otherwise. Be that person that educates them, that teaches there is no reason to hate us or to treat us as other and lesser. There was once a time when many white kids were afraid of black folks, and white folks made them use a separate restroom. Were those kids born afraid? No, it was our silence, and it was our words as white folks, what we did and didn't do that instilled that fear in their lives. Now, just as then, if your children are afraid of trans kids, it's because you have taught them to be afraid. Trans folks have been using public restrooms for as long as there have been public restrooms. You are only afraid now because we have started to find our voice and because you have had to be forced to acknowledge that we exist. The reason many of you may not know this is because we've been systematically erased from Westernized, Eurocentric patriarchal history. We have sometimes been erased in words by being left out of the telling of our history, and at other times, we have been erased by violence. Just this year, this same topic came up on Facebook, and one Omaha resident was bold enough to publicly announce that he found a trans woman was using the same restroom as his daughter. Quote, "One of us would be leaving in a body bag, and one of us would be leaving in handcuffs." The threat of violence still exists, and it will persist until the day we are not seen as a threat, a mentally ill person, or a deviant.
One minute.
Saying nothing, doing nothing, only adds to the perception of those who have no reason to further educate themselves. Let me end with this story, because despite the ignorance and hate you've heard today, there is hope for our future. This summer, I taught a group of a dozen girls how to code, middle school girls from this community. As their final project, they had to decide on an issue they saw in their community to raise awareness of through a website that they all felt passionately about. They came up with all the ideas. They whittled those ideas down over weeks. I had no part in influencing the decision. It was actually gone in San Francisco when they decided on the topic. They chose LGBTQIA issues because they wanted to make sure that people in our community knew that they were supported, that they mattered, and that they wanted them to feel safe and loved in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nathaniel Grant Gudinski.
Hi. My name is Nathaniel Grant Gudinski. I'm a resident of LD 20, and my toddler just started preschool, so I'm very happy about that. I'm not going to take up...
Can you spell your last name?
G-A-D-Z-I-N-S-K-I.
And can you give your address?
8086 Dorcas Street.
Perfect. Thanks.
I'm not going to take up much of your time. Nothing I could say could compare to the eloquence and passion that we just heard from two people who have struggled with this issue and struggled with the discrimination surrounding LGBTQ issues. So, I will simply say, listen to them. Listen to the voice of the transgendered kids in your school district. Protect them. They suffer every day, discrimination, they suffer harassment, they are bullied, and some of them will end up taking their own life. They are the ones that you should be protecting. They need it. So, please, adopt this resolution.
Thank you. That's the end of public comment. So, with that, we're going to move on to the consent agenda that is before us. And just to point out to board members, let's see. Now, under Action, we have J-2F, Space Saver High Density Mechanical Assist Mobile Storage System, TAC Library Services, and J-2G, Agreement with Boys and Girls Clubs in the Midlands for the Florence Elementary School. Those items were pulled off a consent by Mr. Snow. With that, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us?
So moved.
So, motion by Ms. Williams. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. America. Are there any abstentions? Ms. Underwood?
I will be abstaining from I-5.
From I-5? Any others? Okay, hearing none. There's a motion by Ms. Williams and a second by Ms. America to approve the consent agenda that is before us, with Mrs. Underwood abstaining from item I-5. Roll call, please.
Dotting.
Aye.
America?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Underwood?
Aye.
Vargas?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Fay?
Aye.
Eightye.
Okay, motion carries. With that, we're going to move on to item J-1A, Committees of the Board Update. The Accountability Committee has not met since we last met. We instead have the Superintendent's Contract on the agenda, and when we get to that item, I'll call in Mr. Scanlon at that time. The Budget and Audit Committee is scheduled for August 22nd, and we had a budget workshop at our last regular board meeting, so we have not met as a group since then. Communications, I believe, Mr. Ray, can you help me out on when Board Member Handbook comments are due back?
They were due back last week, I believe.
Last week. And did you get any?
I have not received anything.
Okay. So, the Communications Committee will now meet. Policy Committee met July 27th, and we talked about a number of things. One of the, a couple of updates that we had was Policy 1000 and Policy 1060, which were Statement of Intent on Community Relations and Advertising and Promotion, Community Relations, those two were approved. Policy 1401, which is the Community Partnership, and that is on the action agenda for us this evening, as well as Policy 1402. And we did make, I think, one wording change on 1401. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Where we changed CFO to...
It was a recommendation, I believe, from Mr. Wayne about the role of the CFO.
Right. So, we made a small adjustment there, which you should have seen highlighted. We changed must be approved by the Chief Financial Officer to must be reviewed by the Chief Financial Officer. We talked about Policy 5103, which is related to the implementation of the academic eligibility, and we discussed just some changes that needed to be made to that to update just the fact that timing-wise, we're moving along with that policy, which needs to be cleaned up wording-wise, as well as who's participating in the coaching, which kind of goes along with our last workshop. We did a policy status review, just to get a sense of where we're at. So, we're essentially with one group of policies left. So, in front of you, I asked Mr. Ray if he could give us both of those. So, Series 5000, Part 1 is in front of you, white with yellow highlights. Those yellow highlights are what are on the agenda for this evening related to student Series 5000. And all of the changes that were recommended by board members are in red, correct?
They're highlighted as yellow on the cover sheet, and then red, and then we provided attachments.
In the detail. So, in the detail, it's in red. Okay. And then, we have Policy Series 5000, Part 2. So, if you would please take a chance to read through that that is in front of you. We talked about it a bit in Policy Committee, and I think we were all supposed to get back to Mr. Ray by today, but I know I've been on vacation, so I didn't get that done. So, if you could, everyone, take a look at that. We also discussed Policy 1200, which, again, is an action item, J-2C on the agenda right now. So, that's kind of an update on the Policy Committee. Was there any other? Ms. Williams?
I just, actually, I wasn't able to make the Policy Committee. I was out of town. But just was curious, have we looked at these policies and gotten a copy of these over to Mr. Lawaroo to work with the Student Voices Council on some recommendations from students?
I believe, yes, we have. We have.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think they've been, through all of the staff that were, we talked about multiple staff have looked at the Policy 5000 Series, correct? And made any recommendations and changes?
Correct.
Okay, so, yes. And with Mr. Lawaroo to look at anything specific related to this?
Those 5000s have been provided to Mr. Lawaroo.
Yes. So, I think that's it as far as the Policy Committee, unless anybody has questions on that. Americanism, I'm not sure, no meeting? Student Assignment Plan, Ms. Underwood?
Yes. So, we met, I lost it, July 26th. Our next meeting is scheduled for August 23rd. It was mainly an update from staff on the communication that they're doing with parents for those students who will, parents and guardians for those students who will lose transportation under the new student assignment plan. They've been really proactive about that. There are 2,800 students total impacted, and our staff has made every attempt to contact all of them. And those conversations have been good, and kind of the general feeling is that those families appreciated the heads-up so that they can proactively choose another school where they will get transportation or find alternatives to losing bus transportation. The other thing we talked about was, I think I might have mentioned this last time, but the Conestoga-Kennedy, changing the boundaries there for the 75 North Project. That will come in front of the Board the second meeting in September?
That's the one.
Is that right, Mr. Ray? Okay. So, we'll all be able to talk about that and how that kind of impacts things. And there are not very many students that are impacted, I'll just say that. But basically, that's just to kind of get things aligned around the new Howard Kennedy and project that's going on up there. That's pretty much it for the student assignment plan.
Okay, and I would just add, I had a conversation with a parent yesterday, and so just for any parents listening or watching, there is a website, SAP.org?
OPS.
OPS.org, which you can put in your address, and it will tell you which schools you get transportation to, which you don't, both this year and next year. So, I just encourage folks to go to that if they're listening or watching or hear. So I just encourage folks to go to that if they're listening, or watching, or here, so that they have just really clear understanding, as well as gives, there's a great video to watch, and I think five different languages. And so I just want to toss that back out again, because I know I ran into a parent yesterday who was a little unfamiliar with the process, and I think that often clears it up. So I don't know if anyone else has anything from student assignment plan they want to add, or if anyone has any questions. Let's see, Legislative, Mrs. Faye? Nothing. And Construction Manager at Risk? I know I'm scheduled to be on that for Burke, but I don't think there's been any other ones. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Underwood.
We had interviews a few weeks ago for Norris Middle School, and we approved that one at the board meeting last, or the board workshop a couple weeks ago.
And I assume that went well?
It went really well.
I think those are quite fascinating committees to sit on with staff and community members. The SSRR, Specialty Schools Review and Recommendations Committee, has not met. Okay. Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, that's scheduled upcoming, Mr.?
Yeah, we're meeting August 24th, and there is in receipt of reports, a Jacobs Bond report for board members to look at.
This very long, 90-some pages or something, is that right? I skimmed through it. Code of Conduct, Mr. Snow?
Okay. Code of Conduct, we met on the 21st and the 26th. I reviewed the SRO contracts, and David Kramer is going to get up later on during the action item and talk about what we actually recommended, or what we are recommending to the Board to approve today.
Okay, and that item is J-2B, Approval of School Resource Officer Contracts. Okay, I think that's it. So we're going to move on to J-1B, Transgender Policy Discussion. So on this item, typically what happens is the Superintendent and Board Officers get together and decide on agenda items, and at this time, I think Mr. Evans has, doesn't have any, or didn't have any recommendations for us, considering the national climate surrounding bathroom and locker rooms, and the litigation that's ongoing. But he had assured us that he's working with staff to ensure that staff are aware of the legal aspects of the issue, and that they're addressing that with staff. Is that correct? So I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, that's what we shared in a previous board meeting, where we had the item as an agenda item, with the policy changes coming back from the Policy Committee that are reflected later on on this agenda. But on the restroom usage, we were looking for guidance and direction from the state of Nebraska, as well as the other litigation that's occurring across the nation, which is, as we all know, being highlighted on a regular basis. So that was our last, last input on the item.
But in accordance with Policy 8343, the item is on the agenda for discussion of transgender staff and student use of bathrooms and locker rooms, as far as a more detailed policy. So I think I'll turn it over to Mrs. Faye. I know that was a, you know, request of yours.
Yes, you published it with the agenda, so I think everybody knows it was a request of mine. I'm proud to have it be so. But it's not about me, and it's not, even though I think one of the things I have heard many of the people in public comments say today is that this is a very political, very political issue. And to make that supposition that this issue would be put on the agenda by any particular group of board members for political reasons, without knowing us, or what's important to us, or our families, or our personal circumstances, is wrong, because you don't know. So, but again, it's not about me. It's, as a board member, and when crafting policy and what's best for the school district, I try and look at research-based, evidence-based, best practices for what should be in our policies. So with that said, I have turned to, let me say one more thing. That doesn't eliminate the importance of individual stories, whether they're board members, students, families, community members. That can often be the impetus, and the inspiration, and the motivation behind why you might draft a certain policy. But again, for me, I'm going to look at adopting policy that's evidence-based, that's research-based, and it includes best practices. And to address Mr. Evans' point about pending lawsuits, to my knowledge, there's not one, including the Supreme Court's stay of the Fourth District Circuit Court's decision, that would prohibit the Omaha Public Schools from passing more explicit rights for our transgender students. There's only policy, or there's only rule, cases out there, pending rulings, that might allow districts to not pass them if they didn't want to, but nothing that would require us to. So again, if we're looking at what's best practice, and what's rooted in evidence and solid research, and what's best for our students, then regardless of what happens with the lawsuit that Nebraska has filed, or this Fourth Circuit ruling, that wouldn't impact whether or not we can make a decision about what's best for our kids. So I thought it was really timely that the CDC, we get these little email blasts on a regular basis, I don't know, you know, we get a lot of them in our inbox, and we got one from this, from NSBA, which is the National School Boards Association, that talked, this is just last week, that talked about a CDC Centers for Disease Control survey that revealed that gay high school students face a higher risk of depression, violence, and bullying. Those of us who are current on this issue knew that already, but this was the first national survey to identify lesbian and bisexual high school students, and track their health risk, and that they are, and I'm going to quote, "indeed at far greater risk for depression, bullying, and many types of violence than their straight peers." This is the first time the federal government's Youth Risk Behavior Survey, a survey that the Omaha Public Schools participates in, the gold standard of adolescent health data collection, looked at sexual identity. So that just came out last week in our inbox, I don't know how many of you looked at it. That's just further evidence of things that the research done by the Family Acceptance Project, which is out of, I think, San Francisco State University, San Francisco, San Francisco State University, Family Acceptance Project, which has done extensive research in this area, and shown time and time again that for every increment of support that LGBT students get from their community, including their schools, that that increased risk of suicide, depression, risky behaviors, goes down. And it goes down in a statistically significant way. So I think that research alone makes it something that we have to talk about and seriously consider, because if we can continue to show our LGBT students that we are supportive, then we're going to be doing things, that's going to be an action that's going to be in the best interest of their health and well-being. So that just makes sense. As far as, I don't want to spend a lot of time talking about the issue of sexual assault. And I am very respectful and was often, when people were speaking, very moved by their honesty and bravery to get up here in a, on television, in a very public setting, and talk about something that was clearly very painful and personal. And I have a tremendous amount of respect for that. However, if there's a safety issue in our bathrooms, in our locker rooms, or anywhere else in our school, if there's anything that puts any of our students at risk, that is separate completely from whether or not transgender students are using restrooms or locker rooms. And we need to address the safety issue. So in meeting with constituents who had this concern, you know, that was a point that I took away from them. Help me find some solutions for where you feel that there are students who are unsafe in restrooms, or locker rooms, or anywhere in school. Because if, now, I don't have any personal knowledge of that, and I have four children who've gone through the Omaha Public Schools, one left, three who've graduated, and I don't have any personal knowledge of that, but, you know, we have a lot of students, a lot of bathrooms, and a lot of locker rooms, and a lot of other places in our schools where things could potentially happen that could be harmful to our students. So I feel like we need to address safety issues completely separately from any issues around transgender students using restrooms or locker rooms. Those are two completely separate things. And so if we need to have a separate discussion about what that is, then let's do that. Now, in looking at some of the best practices that are out there, which we've heard from GLSEN tonight, and we've been received on multiple occasions, both in email and handed out at meetings, some of the sample policy language that GLSEN has put together, I also looked at the policies that were put together by the state of California. And in order to address some of these concerns about safety, they have something here that's access to sex segregated facilities. Although schools, this is, like I said, from the state of California, although schools may maintain separate restrooms, locker rooms, or other facilities for males and females, students must be allowed to use the facility that corresponds to their gender identity upon request. Where available, a gender-neutral restroom or changing area may be offered to any student who desires increased privacy, regardless of the underlying reason. Other options to address privacy concerns include a bathroom stall with a door, an area in the locker room separated by a curtain or screen, access to a staff member's office, or use of a locker room before or after other students. However, no student who is entitled to use a facility consistent with his or her gender identity can be required to use an alternative arrangement. Any alternative arrangement should be used only at the request of the student, and, if applicable, in a manner that keeps students' gender identity confidential. That seems to me to be an example of a solution that addresses many of the concerns that were raised here tonight. We don't have to make this up. Policies like this one in California, policies like the one in the Bellevue Public Schools, are being enacted all over the country. And as someone said to me the other day, this, we were talking about this, the sky has not fallen, and, you know, the earth has not opened up and swallowed these school districts. There was something in there about the seventh circle of how that, that didn't happen either. So, so again, I think that there's best practices and previous, or school districts around the country who are facing these same challenges, and finding solutions that are acceptable to the majority of their students and families, while respecting privacy and putting safety as the number-one priority. I think the only other thing I want to say about, there was, there was a comment about forcing children to be clothed, excuse me, forcing children to be unclothed, or partially unclothed, in a locker room, or in a restroom, or what, you know. Again, that goes, those kinds of concerns go back to this general safety issue. And so any student, again, completely regardless, completely separate from whether or not transgender students are using restrooms or locker rooms that are associated with their gender identity or gender expression, if there's a student who's uncomfortable being unclothed, or partially unclothed, in a locker room or a restroom, that's a separate issue that needs to be addressed with that student, and perhaps with the school in general, and has nothing to do with transgender I think when we're talking about sexual predators, and when you have 51-plus thousand students and 8,000 staff members, 9,000 staff members, unfortunately, bad things are going to happen. And we try and pass policy that, and hold our Superintendent and his staff accountable for protecting the rights and enforcing practices, and rules, and regulations that are there to protect the safety of all of our students and our staff. But we're all human, and bad things happen. So again, I want to make sure that we're addressing the safety of our students completely separately from anything that has to do with transgender students using restrooms or locker And I think the last thing I'll say at this moment, while reserving the right to speak again, if I, if I need to, is that I don't find it an acceptable practice by this district to put the burden of proof as to whether or not there is an unsafe practice, a discriminatory practice, on our transgender students and families. I think that that's, it's our responsibility, for the reasons that I've outlined, safety, research that shows what, how we can best support our transgender, our entire LGBT student population, but specifically for this conversation, transgender students, that that's our responsibility to pass policy and ask our staff, our Superintendent, to hold our staff accountable for implementing that policy in a fair and equitable manner. That's our job. We don't take other groups, minority or otherwise, and ask them to carry that burden, and do it one group at a time. In fact, a year ago, we, or it could have been two, we had some Native American students come before us from South High School, because they were not, felt through some misinformation, just misinformation, by a staff member at South High, that they were not able to use some of their regalia as they went through graduation. And the Board confirmed what we already had in policy and enforced in practice, that that's students' rights. We didn't say, we're going to handle this on a case-by-case basis, which then allows for that same kind of misunderstanding and misinformation to happen. We protected the rights of that entire group of students that fall under that, though they be small in number. And this is that same type of situation, where we need to make decisions as a Board that put the burden on us, on the adults, not on our students. So I really, I thank the Board for drafting Policy 8343, which I think we passed when Justin was President. Because prior to that, we didn't know how board members could get an agenda item on the agenda. And so this, this Board, you all sitting around here, passed Policy 8343, and it's been used before, I believe, but... And it's been used before, I believe, but I thank you for putting this item on the agenda. I'm proud to have my name on it, although I don't like being called out by the audience, but it's okay. And I respectfully ask that you give this a very thoughtful discussion and consider asking staff to bring forward policy that explicitly protects the rights of our transgender students and their right to use restrooms and locker rooms in agreement with their gender identity or gender expression. I think that there's plenty of precedent for how to write this policy in a manner that addresses many of the concerns that we've heard today.
Are there any other comments for Mr. Snow?
Thank you, Madam President. My name's listed on here too. I'm not going to reiterate every, everything Ms. Fay said, but I do support this board to go back, to direct the district to go back, to come back with some more explicit language about transgender staff and student use of bathrooms and locker rooms. But I do want to make this point here. We got a lot of people come up and I feel like they demonize people. But then they on the other side say, this is America. Our US military is probably the finest in the world. Both of my parents were in the military. I was named after my uncle who died of AIDS, who was a Marine and disarmed with a discharge because he was caught. They said he was, they outed him, so they disarmed, discharged him in the military. But however, I don't see how people, and this is just my opinion, can come up and say, this is wrong. But then, as our nation's honor, we allow transgender people to defend this nation. As of June 2016, the military is allowing them to serve openly in our country, for our country, as well as LGBTQ across this nation, that you can serve, put your life on the line, but when it comes to schools, you're different. I, I don't, I don't get it. How do we say that we're being patriotic for America? You can go put your life on the line, die for your nation, but in your school, you have no rights. So shame on you.
Please, I have to close.
I'll end on, I'll end on this piece here. We had probably, if I can count, maybe one, two students from OPS that came up and spoke about how their life is affected. Many people want to come up and talk about other people's lives, but unless you've been in those shoes or have someone directly reflected about that or have encountered that situation, you have no right to speak for anybody. So in essence, if you want to continue to speak like this and act like this, go to Central High School, go to South High School, meet these students, see the kids that are their friends. The kids that you say are, are afraid to see them, they are their friends. They talk to them and they work with them every day. And I think you're undermining this next generation. And my thing is, you're on the wrong side of history. Thank you, Ms. Scotty.
Are there, Ms. Williams?
Well, my name is not on there, however, I, I want to make a comment. First, I have to say thank you, Billy. Because you were, you spoke on it, but you weren't the only person in this room that were offended by comments. Mr. Evans can attest, I shared my own personal story at our new teacher induction. I've been molested and raped and God knows, but I'm here. And I'm here to represent our students regardless of what their makeup looks like. But I think it's absolutely despicable to know that adults are willing to come to a public meeting that is supposed to be about the best interests of our students, to show pure hatred, bigotry, to offend our students, our minorities and to undermine their intelligence, as well as the hard work that this board does put in and we don't always agree. But we come and we serve willingly, we take time away from our families, from our jobs. We are criticized, we are all of those things. However, we have a right to be heard as public officials. And so the amount of hatred that is sent our way, we listen respectfully, we do not comment, we let everyone have their peace. But I'm going to say that our job is to make sure that our students are safe. And my safety issue, Mrs. Fay, you, you brought that up and so we should have a conversation. If we want to talk about safety, the bathrooms are the number one place across the country that students are getting killed and bullied and all these other things. So if we want to have a conversation about safety, let's talk about how do we get the dollars to have restrooms that are like our airports, floor to ceiling and that hand washing stations to be public? Because that's the only way you're going to stop bullying and hatred. And it doesn't have to be regardless of what your orientation is, what your, what your race and culture is. It's just hatred. And that's the one thing that this conversation should, should change to is we should have a conversation about safety. But I'm going to just be very honest, for me, this is not about politics. These students that are here and students in schools across our district are able to reach out to board members like they've never had before and have their voice heard. And I personally am not going to take that away from them because reality is, is this is their education. My child makes a decision in her education whether or not I agree with that always, I don't. But this is also her journey. And so whatever, whatever the rest of the year looks like, but I'm always going to advocate for students first because that's why we, we are here, whether you agree or disagree. The education of our students, if our students are safe, how are they going to learn if they're not safe? No one has addressed that. I, I respect deeply the comments. Mr. Meyer comes and he listens and he stays. Gwen Easter comes and she states her opinion, but she listens and she stays. Look at the room right now. The students that are here to represent themselves stayed, but the adults that want to come and villainize everyone working to make sure that our students are safe and their achievement is, the, the gap is, is closing, where, where's everyone? No one comes when we're talking about, no one comes when we're talking about math standards and reading standards and we all say, wow, what, how, where's everyone at? We're, you know, these are important topics about achievement and learning and academics, but no one is here. We only want to come out when it's a hot topic issue. So I'm just going to state it publicly that my issue is making sure that our students are safe. That is my only agenda. If that means that I'm only here until December, trust and believe every vote that I make at this table is going to be for kids, not for just the students that are in our system now, but for generations to come. And whatever the outcome looks like is whatever the outcome looks like. I didn't get in this because it's going to put me, catapult me anywhere. But the level of disrespect that has come to this board, I have to say, is very disrespectful. It's, it's saddening and it, it just really represents the hatred of our community. I, again, I, I give so much respect to those who come and, and state their case. I, I'll shout out Gwen Easter because Gwen and I don't get, we don't see eye to eye on several things, but you know what she does is she brings her passion and she wants to protect her students and the students as well that she works with and that her family members as well. So this is, this, this conversation should be about safety for all kids and not outing any group, whether it's minority, whether it's their sexual identification or gender identity of any of that. But this is really, this has gotten out of hand. And, and every adult in this community should really feel ashamed that we are really not standing up behind our students. You can agree or disagree, that's your choice, but this is where I stand. It's our students will be first as long as I'm here, whether that's six more months or six more years. But I just want every student in this district to know that you have members sitting at this board that put you first regardless of what your background looks like.
Are there any other? Mr. Wayne?
So the process is, from a legal standpoint, I have to say this, why some people don't understand why we do not cut off some conversation is as long as they're not talking about an individual. Legally, the five minutes that is allowed is an open mic that we have to provide the public for both sides, although it's difficult at many times to listen. It is the opportunity for, for both sides to do it, it's something we have to follow. Along those same principles, the reason I was so adamant about three board members being able to put something on the agenda is we often struggled a long time ago to get things on the agenda and we would have